It's five o'clock somewhere.
Not here.
Not here.
The longest minute.
Okay, come in.
Thirty seconds.
It's the longest minute, Mayor.
It says five o'clock up there, closed session.
Nope.
I found some. Money, hopefully.
Money, yeah. Look at that.
Checks?
The cash.
That's a bribe, that's a bribe to Captain Lawford. Oops.
My hundred dollar bill fell out of here.
Motion.
Okay.
Do you want to call roll first?
Yes, if I may just make two announcements. This is calling the regular meeting of October 1st, 2024 to session. And one of the items is real property negotiations, so I will read that for the record. Discussions concerning real property transactions and compliance with Government Code, Section 54956.8 regarding real property negotiations, 150 Avenida Magdalena, APN 060-101-05, and 721 Avenida Salvador, APN 690-502-16. The property is Wireless Tower Facilities located on city properties at the municipal golf course site and at the Salvador Water Reservoir, AKA Crown Castle sites, 823239 and 879058. City negotiators Andy Hall, City Manager, and Jonathan Lightfoot, City Planner. Negotiating parties are Crown Castle and MD7 under negotiation, price and terms. And we have a motion.
I'll make a movement to adjourn.
To closed session.
Recession.
Second.
Second to recess to closed session at 5:01 PM. And that carries 5:00.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
...
Victor, your beach photos, did you want those under council? Excuse me. Oh, hi there. How are you doing? Okay, this is the regular city council meeting of October 1st. We've called the meeting to order. First item of business is Reverend Dale Rosenberg with San Clemente Presbyterian Church here to give the invocation.
All right, please stand if you can. Good evening, will you pray with me? Lord our God, we come before you this evening with grateful hearts, seeking your guidance and wisdom as we gather to serve our hometown. Before an election which will mark our community and nation, we thank you for the privilege of working together for the betterment of our town and its residents. Lord, we ask that you grant us clarity of thought in our discussions and purity of purpose in our decisions. And may all of our deliberations and actions reflect your love and embody your compassion, understanding our role here as that of servant leaders. May this always be a place where we strive for the common good. And so guide our leaders with your wisdom and help us to hear one another with open hearts. May we work collaboratively fostering unity and understanding among all elements of our community. And may our efforts be fruitful and may we honor you in everything that we do. And as your blessings mark this meeting, may they spread out from here to our town, our city. In your holy name we pray.
Amen.
Thank you. Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance at, is that right? Okay, and I think we have a young future leader, Emmett Maloney, are you, are you, come on up here. If you want to stand right here in the front, we're going to do the, can you help us with the pledge of allegiance? All right, just start it and we'll follow.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hold on one second here, I got something for you.
It's like Emma Maloney Day, man.
Yes, thank you for being here. This is a quote from the mayor. Sure.
Smile.
Thank you.
Next item?
Next item is roll call and we will note that all council members are present. Moving on to special presentations, the first item on the agenda was a presentation by the registrar of voters. That has been pulled from this meeting, has been removed from the agenda as well as item 10A related to a resolution regarding voter integrity. So moving on to presentation of proclamation, code enforcement officer appreciation week. And I believe we have Daniel Sorahan here to accept the proclamation, there she is.
All right.
And Adam.
And Adam is here.
Adam, did you have something to say?
No.
No, okay. That's a surprise. Well, no, every year we try and recognize the people that have done good work here in our city. And code enforcement obviously is one of those groups and organizations within the city that has done an outstanding job. And so this is code enforcement officer appreciation week. So we want to present this to the office and thank you for your service.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Got a photo op and the NSP cameras.
All right, next item?
All right, we have two proclamations presented to Orange County Fire Authority Division Chief Mall. I know, shocking.
Ah, it's been too long.
Hold the applause. The first is wildfire awareness season and this is proclaiming midsummer through early autumn 2024 is wildfire awareness and prevention season. And then the second is fire prevention week and that is October 6th through the 12th of 2024.
Beach?
Actually, I ain't gonna present these, I'm not gonna read them both. I do, I would like to hear from you. I know you took a significant role this past week in the airport fire and had, we're out there on call, the commander, part of that. So if you could just talk a little bit about that and where it was and how it is, I think everybody would be interested in that rather than reading these plaques.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, yeah, I'd be happy to share a little bit. Thank you very much, yeah, obviously we're here for Fire Prevention Week and obviously wildfire preparedness week. As you guys all saw within the last couple of weeks, definitely good to be wildfire ready. As we obviously had the airport fire that lit off on a couple of weeks ago. Midday, no wind, as you guys know typically fire season around here has a lot to do with San Ana winds, just a hot, dry day. Fire started out in Tribuco Canyon, out of Tribuco Road out there, got well established. The crews got there and got work on it really, really quick. But the fire unfortunately just took off into the vegetation and continued to grow. And then just went well in alignment through vegetation that hasn't burned in many, many years and grew very large. So it was a big effort by fire departments throughout the entire state. Our OCFA firefighters were on it for well over two weeks. The first crews that were on scene spent the first two days out there without ever coming off the line. So it was, it was big, there was a lot of fires throughout the region down here, so we got no real support from around us. So it was a lot of work, ended up burning a little over 23,000 acres. I'm happy to say because of all the work that we do within our communities here, there was no injuries or homes lost right here in Orange County. We did lose some homes out in El Corizo area, out in the area out there, which is a real difficult area when the fire came into that area. Unfortunately, it was coming in, coming in quick, so that was unfortunate. But we also had no injuries to any Orange County citizens. We did have a couple of people out in Riverside area that were injured, little smoke inhalation of a couple of people at the initial part of the fire. But, but no major injuries, which was really good and really telling to the community how when we told people to get out of their homes, that they, that they listened and they got out on time. So it was really good. Unfortunately, a fire, you know, it, it grew for about four or five days and then it settled into its footprint. But crews continued to work it for a few days. We did have 20 firefighters on the firefighter that were injured with different varying levels of injuries. And then of course, you probably all heard about our hand crew, the Santiago Hand Crew Firefighters that rolled their crew buggy on the 241. After many days of the fire coming off the line for the night, so unfortunately we injured eight pretty critically on that rollover. So it was a really difficult firefight and obviously the days since the accident are also very difficult for the firefighters. So it's, it's been a long haul. But yeah, all that to say, let's be wildfire ready, as I was just gonna share.
Share with it, yeah.
Yeah, we have our ready, so what we really preach out with the OCFA is the Ready, Set, Go program. And we saw it in full effect this, this past week. So one, the first one's being ready, making sure your home is ready and your family's ready for the potential fire. Because it's not, it's not if a fire is gonna come, it's when. We're just now coming into the San Ana wind season, more fires are likely to happen. Everything's really dry, we just saw a fire take off without wind because it's so dry out there. So make sure your house is ready, meaning that you have good clearance behind your home. If you're up against the brush, you want at least 100 feet back, make sure you don't have a bunch of stuff around your house. Make sure as much of the exterior of your house is non-combustible materials like stucco, no wood shingle roofing. I don't see much of that around anymore fortunately, but just make sure you and your family are ready. And then set, know how to know when it's time to go. Have all the different links, you get a pulse point, obviously following Instagram and social media, that's how a lot of the messaging gets out. And then knowing that when the sheriffs come through your neighborhood and say, hey, it's time to go, it's a mandatory evacuation, that it's time to go. We did mandatory, we did a lot of evacuations, we did mandatory ones in Robinson Ranch and the neighborhood packed up and they got out of there. Which allowed our fire crews to get in and do the good work that they needed to do to make sure the fire didn't impact those homes. So it was really, really good, they did a really good job. And then obviously go, when it's time to go, know where you're going, have a plan with your family of where you're gonna go. Have everything you need, you know, if you need medications, things like that, have a go bag ready when the weather's coming, especially if you live in those communities up against the hills. And just, just be ready, so that Ready, Set, Go program is huge. We saw it work in the airport fire, I was really happy we didn't lose any of the homes right there in Robinson Ranch. And that the community was able to get out of there and then get back in safely to their homes. And for all of you, there's, I know in San Clemente, I live here in San Clemente, there's a lot of homes up against the vegetation. At OCFA, we do offer a free, a free program. If you go to ocfa.org/rg for Ready, Set, Go, you can actually right there request a home, a free home inspection. And we'll send out a fire marshal and he'll walk your whole property. And by the end of the day, you'll have a punch list of things that you can do to your home or your property to make sure that you're ready for when a fire comes. So, so again, I really appreciate that opportunity, thank you for letting me speak to, to the fire itself. And please, if you could, keep our firefighters that are still dealing with their injuries and all those that are impacted by it. And your thoughts and prayers, we'd really appreciate that, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. The reason we invite you is so you can share this great information with the public every year. Thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Oh, congratulations, you're a hero.
Want to hold him on the plaque?
Well, I'd love to, thank you.
Okay, over.
All right.
Get out of here.
Thanks again.
One more.
One more.
We're with it up there.
One final proclamation, Hispanic Heritage Month. And this is recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th to October 15th, 2024. In celebration of Hispanic and Latino history, culture and legacies that enrich our community. And I believe we have Mr. Mario Rodriguez here to accept.
So let me take a minute, just to, come on up here Mario. This is obviously Hispanic Heritage Month that started on the 15th. It was, actually, the month was actually, the Hispanic Heritage Month was actually started by President Reagan. And before that, there was a Hispanic Heritage Week that was started by, I'm not sure, do you know which president started that? Nixon, okay. But anyhow, there was an effort, obviously in Washington DC to recognize the contributions in the arts and history and culture of, of the Hispanic community in the United States. That for many decades had, had been forgotten. So we, we invited Mario to accept this for the Hispanic community in, in Orange County. He's a, he's a San Clemente native, he grew up here as a, as a young boy. I'll let you talk about that right now, maybe you, you know some of the people that are still in town, you can give us a little bit more information about their secrets. But let me just read this for you. Whereas in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month, San Clemente is proud to honor one of its native sons, Mario Rodriguez. Mario moved to San Clemente as a child and was raised by his father, a proud United States Marine. As a junior high school student, he attended Marco Forster Middle School in San Juan Capistrano as San Clemente had not yet established a high school. As the son of a single father, Mario grew up attending the Boys and Girls Club after school and subsequently attended San Clemente High School. Where he was an athlete in both football and wrestling. Mario, now adult daughter, also attended and graduated San Clemente High School. And whereas as a teenager, Mario held jobs as a busser, dishwasher, in various restaurants in town. Growing up in San Clemente, Mario found his involvement in store, in sports, helped establish a community roots and created an extended family, providing the acceptance and support he needed. These challenges helped shape his work, ethics and his desire to become a successful entrepreneur and created the lifestyle where he has contributed back to his, his community. Whereas Mario Rodriguez maintains an active and prestigious role in many social organizations and foundations. He currently serves as the Chairman of the Hispanic 100 Foundation, a nationally recognized organization comprised of successful Latino businessmen and civic leaders. Focusing on the development and promoting leadership from within the Hispanic community through advocacy and education. And whereas in addition to the Hispanic 100 Foundation, Mario Rodriguez serves as an advisory board member for Belmont University Law School. As well as the University of California Irvine OCA License Advisory Board. Further, Mr. Rodriguez serves as a board member for the, has served as a board member for both the National Museum of American Latino and the OC Music and Dance. And whereas Mr. Rodriguez also dedicates his time as a board member to the Boys and Girls Club of South Orange County, the Tiger Woods Learning Center. And the Friend Herrera Scholarship Foundation. He's also a special assistant to the, was a special assistant to the President of LULAC and served on advisory board for the National Latino Peace Officers Association. And a former Orange County Deputy Reserve Sheriff, right? Mr. Rodriguez also served as a California Athletic Commissioner as both the Chairman and Vice Chairman respectfully. As well as a National Advisory Board for the Hispanic Leadership Network. Now, therefore, I Victor Cabral, Mayor of San Clemente, acting on behalf of the city council and its citizens. Do hereby proclaim, September 15th through October 15th, as Hispanic Heritage Month here in San Clemente too. And thank you Mario for being here.
You want to say a word first? You want it? Yeah. I don't want to bore everybody, but I will. Well, yeah, growing up here in San Clemente, first of all, I'd like to say, have my daughter Michelle's here and I've got some dear friends that are here with me. And I remember coming to this city, 11 years old, didn't know anybody. And I went down to the Boys Club back then, it was, the Boys Club wasn't Boys and Girls Club, just the Boys Club back then. And they just have a little building and a little blacktop, I mean, the basketball court was a blacktop. And the nets were always broken, so we didn't have really nets on the, just the rim. And that really kept me out of trouble, you know, because when you're that young, and my dad was in military and retired. And after retired, he started working as a bartender at Goodies. So I didn't realize this till later on, I started thinking about it. When I was from 11 to 16, he worked at three in the morning, three in the afternoon, three in the morning. So five nights a week, I was home by myself. And I didn't realize it till I saw my dad on weekends. And so at that point in time, when you don't have guidance, you can go right or you can go left. And what really kept me going the right direction was the Boys Club and getting involved in sports. So it's a great community, I've been going to T Street forever, my buddies on the weekend, I mean, every day in the summer. No shoes, barefoot, or gym, I mean, our swim trunks, our shirt, towel. And the old rafts back then were those really big rafts, you had to blow up and they were really hard, a lot of you may remember those. But this city is the greatest city in the world. I mean, I think everybody can attest to that, the weather, it's quaint, Del Mar's had become such a great little, you know, downtown area. Back then, there wasn't a lot of restaurants back then and I've seen this grow and it is just the best city. And I'm just proud to have grown up here and be part of this city. And I'm the number one ambassador for this city, I really am. And I remember when I was 21, I got invited to President Nixon's house. So, I mean, I was this kid that nobody ever gave a chance to, thought I was gonna make it, you know, didn't have the guidance. As my dad and I, we lived in little apartments around the city. And all of a sudden, one day I'm meeting the President, former President of the United States. And so when I did that, that was just incredible. And just a real quick story, I'll close, is then, many years down the road, about 20, 24 years ago, after President Trump and Bush won. I got invited to the White House for an event in the Rose Garden. And I remember walking to the White House, running on the backyard, on the south lawn, to the Rose Garden. And I stopped and I touched the White House and I just looked back, because way down there, you can see everybody, all the tourists taking pictures. And I said, man, I put my hand on the White House and I looked back, so I said, I may never be here again. So I looked out and I said, man, if my friends could see me now, because none of them ever thought I was ever gonna make it. And I said, here I am as a guest of the President of the United States. And little be known that I was probably been in the White House since then, at least 50 times. I've been having dinner in the, dinner in the state room, been Oval Office three times and, you know, I mean, the best part was in 2002. President Trump, Bush came to Ontario and your San Clementean, your little guy from San Clemente introduced him at a presidential town hall. So that was an incredible time for me. And so Victor, thank you, city council, thank you all for having me here and give me this honor. It's a true, true honor coming from the city that I dearly love, thank you.
Thanks, Hank Leighton.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
All right.
Okay, next item on the agenda is council member reports.
All right. Anybody want to start or? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll start, I just want to report that this last week, I attended with the city manager and others. An interview of the three firms that are competing for the sand study to identify sand located, located off of our shores. I guess the staff will be making recommendation on that pretty quick. But it's exciting to see we're, we're moving forward in the right direction and actually identifying, potentially identifying sand that we can literally move offshore onto our beaches. So one of the multi-pronged approaches to sand, but exciting that we're moving forward.
Had the opportunity to be in the homecoming parade, to represent the city there, that was fantastic. Last time I was in the homecoming parade, I was in high school in the marching band, marching town. So it was really fun to, to be part of that, see the community, fantastic. And the high school does a wonderful job putting that on. Also attended the Cal City's Coastal Advisory Committee, talk about coastal issues up and down the state. And then was able to attend the Pet Project Foundation, the Fur Ball Gala. So that was a great experience and also a great opportunity to talk about our coastal animal shelter. Where we, and I'll talk a little bit about it later in the subcommittees, to adopt our animals, our dogs and cats and bunnies and other animals, so, yeah.
Thank you. Last Friday, I know you probably want to speak to this Victor, but last Friday, we served up a whole lot of ribs to the two Ford Battalion of the Marines that were getting ready to be deployed. And it was fantastic, there was like 400 of them there. And Rods Creek Service in the Chamber worked on that event, it was fantastic. And I know Victor will want to talk about it again. Yesterday, we made a field trip, the city manager, city attorney, myself and our Public Works Director to look at the, for you shortlist people, the penicillin pit down there. The, the big green water there next to the ocean. And apparently we have three years to complete a project down there that we're gonna have to complete. So I think there's a light at the end of the tunnel, there is a strategy to, to clean up that water and make it a much, much better environmental location. And so looking forward to that. And then also, a couple of weeks ago, the Border Patrol was looking for a car, they'd profiled a car that they felt was trafficking drugs. Put out that information and we have two deputies here, Cameron Griggs and Elias Lysia. And to tell you something real quick about Deputy Lysia, he actually had occasion to stop me about a year ago on Camino Capistrano, up towards my house. And was able to very courteously and professionally advise me that I had a taillight out. And he had no idea who I was, by the way. He was, he was courteous and professional just because I was a resident with a taillight out and that was awesome. Well, those two guys were working patrol, they got the description of the car, they were able to locate the car.
There was a fear of running out of ribs, but we kept grilling, so, great event. Also was able to get to toast to the Casa, so we had that again for Casa Romanica. You all remember, Casa Romanica might not be here if it wasn't for the residents of San Clemente, right? We stepped up, came together, and saved our most historic building, and the city residents invested in protecting that hillside and making sure that Casa Romanica remains open and available for children, schoolchildren, not just in San Clemente, but we open it, they open it to schoolchildren throughout the county to come for free and tour, and so it's great to see Casa Romanica back open. One other thing, I'm, again, on the Orange County Fire Authority Board on behalf of San Clemente, last weekend, they had the Girls Empowerment Camp. So, look, everybody kind of thinks firefighter is fireman, right? But actually, there's a growing number of women that are going into the fire service. And so we have a camp now at OCFA for a few years now for girls in Orange County to come and go through the fire drills, and they can think about that as a career, right? If you talk to a lot of, a lot of young women who are in the fire service, they say they never thought of it, right? But that's going to change, because now we bring girls in, and we, it's 13 to 18, we put them through the ranks for two full days, they have to get up at 8:00 AM in the morning. I don't know how they all got there on the first day on Saturday. But they were there, and they got to do all the drills that firefighter trainees do. So, super, super cool camp. I'd like to think my daughters will do it. I don't know if I can get them out of bed to 8:00 AM on a Saturday. That would be a big challenge. But a great thing that OCFA does, along with a lot of other community service, so, yep, that was it.
Just want to add one quick thing, I forgot about Officer or Deputy Lysia, and I know I is so courteous, because he's one of the few deputies that actually grew up here in town and went to high school in San Clemente. So we don't have that many homegrown deputies, but he's one of them, so if you see him out there, wave, say hello, and thank him for his service. So it's been a short time since our last meeting, and since this one lands on the first of the month, we have the first meeting rather quickly after our last one. Last weekend, I was able to attend a couple of events that my colleagues went to, the parade, or the Casa event, because my mother celebrated her 92nd birthday, and she wanted to take a little trip, so I did that. So I was out of town for four days. But beyond that, there were several other things that I was involved with. I was able to speak to a large group of attendees representing homeowners from several homeowners association in South San Clemente about Measure BB, trying to educate them about what the measure is, just practical facts. So I spoke to three different homeowners associations out there on, I think it was that Monday, right after the weekend I got back. I was also able to brief the San Clemente Chamber of Commerce on Measure BB, and won their endorsement for the measure, which I was delighted in. I attended the North Beach Homeowners Association election forum, just to get a feel for what's going on, and it was rather fascinating. We had a booth out in front with some posters, and my friends with Measure BB were there with signs, for those that were interested in taking them. I had the honor of attending the Shabbat Jewish Center. It was a candidates forum, but it was also a special event commemorating one year since devastating October 7th attack on Israel. So that was an event this past week also. I was also honored to speak at the 59th Annual Orange County Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. It's, we had six mayors from Orange County attend to hear Jay Warner Wallace, a renowned cold case homicide detective and bestselling author, who gave his rather compelling and fascinating presentation on religion and the case that he's written a book on. So if you ever get a chance, it's a fascinating book by Jay Warner Wallace. He's also a regular on NBC Dateline. We celebrate that day of prayer in our respective cities also. The San Clemente Chamber of Commerce and the City of San Clemente hosted the Marines, as was mentioned, for families and our adopted 2-4 Battalion. They, as you probably know, are, it was their end of summer barbecue, and it's the start of their deployment, and so this is one of their last opportunities to meet with their families before they're gone for several months out at sea to unknown places. So our prayers were with them. This past Saturday, was honored to attend the Hispanic 100 Lifetime Achievement Award, given to Eduardo Verastegui. Verastegui's a filmmaker, the most recent film being The Sound of Freedom. His efforts in that film exposed the dangers and the problems with human trafficking of minor and woman into the US by the drug cartels. It's a compelling movie, if you get a chance, I think it's on Netflix now. But it talks about the illegal immigration and the harm that's done to children and women through these networks of drug cartels, and it's a true story. So if you get a chance to watch it, go ahead and do that. And that's it for me. Next item on the agenda.
Oral communications, and we do have several speaker cards, so I'll call the first few speakers up. Emmett Maloney, followed by Dr. Robert Brothwaite, followed by Mary H. And if you'd like to just line up, and you can take seats up here at the front.
Go ahead. Yes.
Hi, thanks for having me here. I'm here because we need more trash cans at Lindellane Beach. At the end of the day, they're overflowing with trash that blows all over the place and back into our park and the ocean.
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right. More comments like that, please. Right to the point. We will, we will ask the city manager to take note of that. Next.
Dr. Robert Brothwaite, followed by Mary H., followed by George A.
Good evening, members of the city council. First off, just for clarification, I'm not a physician. I'm Mr. Robert Brothwaite. I wish I was a doctor at times, but you don't want me performing any procedures on you. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly to the city council. I wanted to express my personal appreciation to the members of the city council and to the city staff for the support which HOG has received over the course of the last many months in bringing a project to San Clemente. I'm here tonight to thank, not only thank you for your support, but to announce that this next week will be, we will begin construction on a HOG Health Center in San Clemente. As a resident of San Clemente, this is a personal passion project for me, and I am grateful for the resources that the Board of Directors of HOG have allocated, such that we might be able to construct a health center which is befitting of this community and will serve this community for many, many generations. We will include in that facility primary care services, urgent care services, lots of specialty services like OB-GYN, orthopedics, sports medicine, endocrinology, and the list goes on. All of these physicians are being recruited, have very distinguished experience and pedigrees which will enhance the overall healthcare in our community. We will add to that some of the latest diagnostic technologies that are available here in Orange County. Technologies and diagnostic procedures, which now our residents have to travel out of the city to get. This will occur in the old Office Max building on Avenida Pico in the Pacific Plaza Retail Center, and we look forward to a completion date of next summer when it will open. I would, in closing, once again acknowledge the support of the city council, Mr. Hall, Mr. Otamian, Mr. Lightfoot, who really helped us get this project to the forefront and get it underway. Not only did it save significant time, which we're not accustomed to seeing from city councils in Orange County, but it also saved us considerable funding, which we were then able to plow back into the project to make the project even better for our community. So on behalf of HOG, the Board of Directors, our 8,000 employees and 2,000 physicians, with all my heart, thank you for your support and all that you did to help us begin this new era of healthcare in San Clemente.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I just will mention, I got, I had a preview of that, and I'm looking forward to it. It's going to be a great facility. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Mary, Mary Heron, and I thank you for listening this evening. My colleagues and I live in Orange County, and we are volunteers with the United Sovereign Americans, not spokespersons. United Sovereign American USA is a national organization with thousands of active volunteers in over 20 states. Today, we come to you as concerned citizens sharing alarming information about the state's voter roll database. Research of the state's voter base was done through hundreds of hours of research conducted by highly qualified and credentialed data teams. Analysis of the 2022 election researched by the highly qualified data teams using only official data provided by California election officials indicates serious issues with compliance of federal law. We are here to present to you and the public the results of the aforementioned analysis showing the votes cast, counted and certified may not all be valid and accurate under this constitution and under the law. We are not here to cast any blame or aspersions on any elected official. We do not suggest any candidate in any race has wrongly won or lost their race, nor do we advocate for the overturning or rerunning of any past election. Tonight, we will present to you with a resolution demanding an end to the inaccuracy and uncertainty plaguing our elections, along with a summary of our findings and the laws that apply. Though you bear no direct responsibility for anything in the electoral process, we come to you, our closest elected representatives, for support and action. We're asking that you listen to the resolution, take the necessary, and understand the necessary valid election seriously by adding the resolution to your next meeting agenda. Thank you. Our next three speakers will read the resolution in three parts, and our final speaker will conclude our presentation. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
George A., followed by Linda M., followed by Catherine R.
Hello, Mayor, city council members. My name is George Agary, and I am here to read into the record the first portion of the USA Resolution. Resolution for legally valid 2024 general election. Whereas, it is a recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have a free and fair elections. Whereas, it is the duty of our elected officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation. Whereas, our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld. One, the voter rolls must be accurate, National Voter Registration Act 1993. Two, votes counted must be from eligible voters, US Constitution, 14th Amendment, Section 2. Three, the number of votes counted must be equal to the number of voters who voted. Four, there can be no more than one in 125,000 ballots in air by the voting system, Help America Vote Act 2002. Whereas, the analysis of the California 2022 general election has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies that appear to violate both federal and state laws, including 5,886,198 ineligible and uncertain registration violations found within the California State Voter Roll Database. 2,776,939 votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrations. 123,785 more votes counted than voters who voted. Who knows who cast them? 2,776,849 apparent voting violations in excess of legal standard of system accuracy for a valid federal election. The maximum allowable system errors for the 2022 general election was 90. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda M., followed by Catherine R., followed by Lisa H. Linda?
My name is Linda, and I'm here to read into the record the next session of the USA Resolution. Certification is defined by law as an attestation of accuracy and compliance. The certification of the 2022 election appears to have been fraudulent and illegal. Whereas, these findings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election. Whereas, the intent of the voters must be known factually before certification can be lawfully conducted. Whereas, the 2022 general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of the guaranteed protection of our natural rights under a government duly and provably chosen by us, the American people, resulting in incalculable damage to our families, our way of life, and the fabric of these United States. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us in demanding a valid 2024 general election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. Number one, proof of citizenship, identity and eligibility required to register and vote, not anonymous attestation. Two, voter rolls certified accurate and available for public review and challenged 30 days before the start of early voting. Voters added after that date must bring proof of citizenship, identity, and address in person to a qualified official at such polling place. Three, hand-marked secure ballot similar to currency. Where imaging technology is used for tabulation, the security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine R., followed by Lisa H. Hi, I'm Catherine. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council members, for listening intently to this.
I'm continuing. Number five, adjudication must be signed off by party, candidate, and trained citizen witness after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot images, and cast vote records. Number six, ballots regardless of entry source, election operations, and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count to final canvas, including audit ability and witness transfer with paper records. Number seven, a national institute of standards and technology compliant randomized statistically valid end-to-end audit with a 95% confidence level of all elections pursuant to the 14th Amendment, Section 2, must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified, insured, and bonded security, forensics or financial auditors, not personnel from within the election system. Reconciliation will include the vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, cast vote records, ballot count, qualified voter count, custody transfer, and all other paper and electronic election systems, including logs. Number eight, if the total of unique variances above is more than 10% of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for those candidates affected, unless the issues can be provably corrected by a manual hand recount and a full review of all records. Number nine, waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded. Thank you very much for listening to us.
Reconciliation will include the vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, cast vote records, ballot count, qualified voter count, custody transfer, and all other paper and electronic election systems, including logs. Number eight, if the total of unique variances above is more than 10% of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for those candidates affected unless the issues can be provably corrected by a manual hand recount and a full review of all records. Number nine, waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded. Thank you very much for listening to us and taking this seriously. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Lisa H., followed by Urson R., followed by Lynn M. Lisa?
Hi, this is Lisa again, and I am here to conclude our presentation. What was read into the public record yet again tonight is a powerfully written resolution outlining massive inaccuracies in our 2022 election from registration through certification. The resolution delineates meaningful remedies that will proactively protect the validity of the 2024 general election for all Americans. Your written copy cites many U.S. Supreme Court precedents and federal and constitutional mandates that support the need for such actions. Large numbers of Californians have questions about the trustworthiness of elections. Official data show these concerns are valid, and the law says resolving them is essential in securing our liberty. The cost of that, of not fixing the unenumerated problems, is immeasurable. So we urged you at the last meeting to put this resolution on the agenda for this city council meeting. It has since been removed, but you can still vote, even silently if you prefer, to join us in support of fair, honest, accountable, and valid elections by signing your name on this single copy of the resolution. As you can see, there is a place for a yea or a nay vote. We, as United Sovereign American Volunteers, are not spokespeople, and we are just asking that you support us and sign this document for our state and national leadership. We are clearly aware that you do not have any jurisdiction over county, state, or federal elections, but these consolidated elections in California can have an impact on San Clemente elections as well. Two of the five of you have elections this November. Signing this resolution simply affirms that if the voting systems, not just the machines, but the entire process, are found to be bad, we are simply asking that the city of San Clemente make a public statement that they only support election results that comply with the law. Your signature will not hold any legal bearing, but it does help give the voters of San Clemente their power through this body to take a public position on these very complex election systems. If anyone would like to know more about United Sovereign Americans, you can go to UniteForFreedom.com. That's Unite, the number four, Freedom.com. Thank you.
Thank you.
Urson R., followed by Lynn M., followed by Cheryl.
Good evening, council members. Mayor, my name is Urson Russell. I've been a lifetime Orange County resident. I'm the president of an organization called Patriot Force California, and for the last three and a half years, I've committed my life and most of my sacred fortune to traveling up and down this state. I work with about 24 counties across the state. Out of our 58 counties, that represents about 80% to 85% of our voting population. And our organization focuses simply on understanding our election systems and helping educate the public to make sure that we really know how these systems run, how they run well, how they run bad, vulnerabilities, and so forth. Our election systems in California unfortunately have become very centrally controlled by the state. A couple of examples of that are if someone goes to the DMV and gets their driver's license updated, those changes are pushed down from the state to the county, and the county really has no way to verify those changes in the voter rolls. Similar to like the United States Postal Service National Change of Address, again, the county doesn't really have a way to go and verify that these changes are accurate and correct. We manage a group of hundreds of people over the last six months across about 16 counties, knocked on thousands of doors, and have found many voters that have moved out of state but are still on our active voter rolls. So we've been looking into that. We're working with the Secretaries of State. We're working with the different registers of voters in these different counties. And so our county ROV, Bob Page, a very smart man, has two more degrees than I do and is ISO certified, something that I also don't have. The issue that we have, or concerns that we have, is that the things that are centrally controlled at the state level that are being pushed down on the county that don't have these understanding or vulnerabilities. Our model of our elections today is really based on the banking system that happened in 2002 under the Help America Vote Act. So our elections today have become high-tech cybersecurity data management systems. Now, this is not a knock to Bob Page. He has two degrees, like I said, one's in religion and the other one's in communications. Those don't necessarily essentially say an expert in high-tech or cybersecurity or data pattern solutions. The resolution that you've heard today in our organization has nothing to do with the United Sovereigns movement, but I've been following it for months, and I wanted to come here and speak today. As a businessman for over 25 years, I fall into the two categories of risk and reward in business. Those are things that we're forced to as business owners to look at every day. So I look at this from a standpoint of what's the risk of a city body going and signing this resolution to simply state, if we have these types of problems in our elections, how can we possibly go and actually support some sort of an ultimate resolution in things that don't follow the law? So I urge all of you to just consider that. It really isn't like a big deal to put your name on it and publicly support it, and I really appreciate your time today and allowing me to speak. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Lynn M., followed by Cheryl, followed by Shelley O. Lynn?
Good evening. My name is Lynn Muslin. I've resided in California more than 75 years and here in Orange County more than 70 years. My roots are here. I graduated from UCI and have lived in San Clemente since 1979. I was a special agent and counterintelligence specialist with several federal agencies, and both full-time and later as a contractor after retirement, and was on two joint terrorism task forces after 9/11. I love this country. I love this community, and I'm afraid it's being destroyed. So our national sovereignty is at risk. We have had millions of people who have entered our country totally unvetted, making our national treasures, intellectual properties, and national security extremely vulnerable, with the added bonus of seemingly unlimited access to all of our benefits that U.S. citizens have worked hard for and earned. Restoring our sovereignty starts with protecting and exercising our voting rights of U.S. citizens, not just those who submit a ballot. As you heard two weeks ago and again tonight in California, over 5.8 million ineligible or uncertain registration violations were found. Over 2.75 million votes were cast that were ineligible or uncertain. Over 123,000 more votes counted than voters who voted. Over 2.75 million apparent voting violations in excess of federal standard for a valid federal election. We need voter ID to keep non-citizens from voting. We need in-person voting to stop voter fraud through mail-in ballots by ineligible individuals. And it can start here in San Clemente with each of you signing the United Sovereign America Resolution. Not signing reflects your willingness to be part of the problem and not part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl, followed by Shelley O., followed by Joe Wilson.
Good evening, and thank you for being here and listening to us. I have been doing a lot of research on Orange County voting, and what I've been finding is a little bit concerning, and you've heard United Sovereign who has done a lot on the state, but what's happening here just in our county is quite something that we need to be aware of. First of all, four years ago, in looking at the voter rolls at the ROV, and I use all their data to analyze this, but they had active voters that are born in the year 1800, 1850, and 1900. Now, fast forward four years later, and they are still on the active voter rolls. These are very simple solutions that need to be fixed, and yet the response from the ROV is, we're working on it. That is not acceptable. Four years, and people still on the rolls born in 1800. We've also found in 2023, 32,000 names of people that had moved out of the county and yet are still active voters. They've made a national change of address for a permanent change of their votes, of their locations, and yet they are still not only still on our active voting rolls, and some of them are voting. Whether they are voting themselves or whether somebody is voting using their names is to be determined because that is happening in more than one case. Just here in Orange County, in looking at people that are registered in more than one state, here in Orange County, we found 2,433 people that are registered in more than one state and voting in more than one state. Again, that's just looking at our Orange County numbers. Lord only knows how many more that we haven't been able to research as of yet. There is $16 million that we have been spending ever since we've done mail-in ballots for elections. That is two to three to four times more than we used to spend when we had individual precincts, and that's what we need to get back to. We are part of the Voters' Choice Act, which we were put into many years ago, and it's time. We have now the opportunity to get out of that, which would make a huge difference in being able to gain control of our elections again. So I encourage you to start to look at that and try to get out of that Voters' Choice Act. So we've got more than 30,000 to 50,000 ballots returned as undeliverable every year, and that, again, is a waste of money, a waste of paper, and a waste of our very concerning dollars that we just do not have anymore. So I thank you, and please consider that.
Thank you.
Shelley O., followed by Joe Wilson.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Shelley. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come and speak with you. I'm here because a group and myself have gone to the Orange County Board of Supervisors numerous, numerous, numerous times and asked them to look into election integrity and voter fraud. There have been lawsuits that have brought against them. We've asked them numerous times to please sit down and help us sort through this so that we can ensure that we have accurate and valid elections. And after over a year and a half, we are still getting almost nowhere with them. And so I know that this is not your direct responsibility, but as leaders of community and some of our first-line people that help us and care for us, I'm here to ask that you please, you know, with this information, take this to heart and look into this and help us fight for the peace of mind that we have election integrity in California. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Wilson, followed by Susie Lance.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to see you again.
Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you. But shifting gears here, I think first, out of the gate, I want to thank each and every one of you guys for what you've done in terms of the support for Measure BB and beach-related projects that we need to fund. That's huge. We really appreciate it. Mr. Hall as well, thank you. And also, second point I'd like to make tonight, I think the collaboration that needs to take place between the city council and the active groups in our community who are trying to save our beaches is really crucial. And to have a collaborative, congenial, solid relationship is extremely important to me, and I want to pass that on to you tonight. So in that same vein, I met this morning with Andy, and we were talking about Measure BB and what's going on with the beaches and so forth. And one of the key contentious issues has been the issue of how many boulders, how much boulders, how wide the boulders will be when OCTA goes to protect their tracks. And I think when we were kicking this around this morning, I said, look, has anybody actually gone and measured the width of the boulders that are in the revetments today? Because recently, over the last year or two, OCTA has gone and strengthened their revetment. So I said, I'll get a tape measure and go out there today and see what we've got. So I went from Cypress Cove all the way up to Calafia. How long is that stretch, you guys? A mile and a half?
Two miles.
Two miles, yeah. And what I found was the actual revetments, particularly the new ones that they've recently engineered and reinstalled over the last couple of years, from the center of the tracks out to where the revetment hits the sand is about 30 feet. Okay? And one of the things that's been discussed in the past is, why can't OCTA go ahead and continue to protect their tracks with the same width and engineering that they've had in recent years? So I just wanted to pass that on you guys because I know that you have relationships with them. You meet with OCTA a lot, and we really support that. And if you can maybe suss that out a bit, because it's been talked that 50 feet of new rocks is going to go on the beaches, well, that's still conceptual discussions. If we get that down to something that is in line with what they've already put in recently, and we say, look, if you've got pieces to repair, do it at the same width, I think we could make some pretty good headway in terms of the collaboration that you have with us people in the city. Thank you very much for listening tonight.
Thank you.
Mayor, we are right at 30 minutes for oral communications. We have four cards left. Would you like to hear them now or oral communications, Part II?
Do we have a minute left? Let's hear them now.
Okay. Susie Lance, followed by Louise Herbert, followed by Angela Watts.
I'll be real quick. Susie from the Chamber of Commerce, just wanted to thank again those of you who attended the Marine BBQ. Thanks to the city for supporting that effort and all of the council actually for supporting this. We actually had, I think, closer to 750 Marines. The reason I know this is because we planned food for 600, and Fisherman's did sponsor this, and they ran back to the restaurant and got some more food. So it was a big, big crowd. Couldn't have done it without Fisherman's, obviously the city, Rod's Tree Service and their support, Heritage Foundation, and all the other dozens of supporters on that day. So thank you so much. This week, the chamber's hosting our wonderful city manager, Andy Hall, for, and we're having some appetizers with him. He's going to talk to us about all things happening in the city that will be at Beach Fire this Thursday, and folks can sign up on our website to attend and hear the latest updates. We're also hosting the ribbon cutting at the Casa Romantica to celebrate their grand reopening of the salon on Friday. And then finally, just again, wanted to mention that the chamber did last Monday unanimously that the board voted to support the Measure BB, citing that the sand replenishment is really an emergency action for business to sustain in this community. So anyhow, just wanted to thank you all again for all you do, and that's it from the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you.
Louise Herbert, followed by Angela Watts, followed by Suzanne Mooneyham. Louise?
Good evening. Thank you once again for allowing me the opportunity to speak with the board. I'm Louise Herbert, 41-year-plus resident of San Clemente. I'd like to discuss a few things tonight, and one starts with you, Councilman Namblock. I have to say that I was so appalled seeing the video of you at Calvary, praying over people on our CUSD board and potential candidates, and bringing up the word to remove the demonic people and teachers within our system who are indoctrinating our children and sending them home to become gay or absurd comments such as that. I didn't think the bar could get much lower, but it has. That was such a performance, and it was disgusting. Second issue I'd like to bring up is that, once again, you're throwing up shiny balls. And of course, the whole set of balls just arrived tonight. I cannot believe that you're considering a discussion once again on items that are not part of the jurisdiction of city council. Our voting integrity is great in this county. Excuse me. Try to be professional. I didn't laugh at your insane remarks.
All right, let's speak to the city council.
Well, then, stop them, please, Mayor. Thank you. I cannot believe you're doing what you did once again. You've thrown up shiny balls about making this an abortion-free area, a gun-toting town, and sequestering votes or not allowing voting to be easy and accessible for everybody. To do this once again... To do this once again is just another measure in which you are taking away valuable time that the council can be addressing real work. But then again, three out of the four candidates running for one of the seats in District Three agreed with this insanity on having to make voting that much harder for people who cannot get to the ballot centers, voting centers. And we have been doing mail-in voting successfully, as many states have. So now we have another councilman sitting here tonight who has vowed to say that he's going to look into that too and that he wants to see voting no longer become mail-in. Along with that, he told everybody in this city during that forum last weekend that we all must be uneducated if we believe that going from a city-at-large vote to districting wasn't the same thing. Your words actually were. If you think that that hasn't changed the manner in which our voting takes place, then you're uneducated. Thank you very much. You've insulted not me, but many others in this town who believe your words were disingenuous. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to respond since those comments were directed toward me, and I know that's totally inappropriate, but to comment on a church service and criticize me for being asked by the pastor to say a prayer is totally inappropriate. When I prayed for the council, the candidates that were running, that were there to present their ideas, I mentioned that, in my opinion, the philosophies of taking children, taking minor children, and saying a boy can be a girl, a girl can be a boy by genital mutilation and puberty blockers, and saying that's demonic, in my opinion, it is demonic. And I stand by that. And regarding the issue of voter integrity, that was taken off the agenda because I didn't feel we had support for it. But I think voter integrity is vitally important to our democracy. People talk about the need for preserving democracy, and when you have votes that are not accurately maintained, that's a threat to democracy. And we've seen across the nation lots of people that have been, that are not citizens that are registering to vote. We see that in Arizona, a number of states, including California. So for people to speak their mind and advocate for sound government is something I applaud and I support, and so those are my comments. Thank you.
All right, the next speaker.
Excuse me. Excuse me. He addressed back to me.
Hold on, no, no. Hold on.
Cut the mic.
Yeah, no, no, it's not a debate. Well, he's a member of the City Council, and he's able to respond. So we're going to take a five-minute recess right now.
You should let the last speaker.
We're going to take a recess.
They will.
We're going to take a five-minute recess.
I don't want to respond also.
Okay, all right.[806.44]
Okay, continuing on, calling the meeting back to order and continuing on with oral communications. Angela Watts, followed by Suzanne Mooneyham.
Hi, everyone. I'm Angela Watts. I am a candidate for City Council in District Three. And I wanted to come here to thank you for removing the resolution for affirming voter integrity for elections. Ultimately, this issue is outside of council's purview, and I find it concerning that the council would politicize an issue like voting right before an election, especially in Orange County where we have expert voting systems. Frankly, I think our council should focus less on political gain and more time fixing the issues as residents are facing. As a resident myself, I want our city council members to focus on keeping our parks safe, like Maxburg Park and San G, and focus on filling the vacant positions we have allotted our sheriff's deputies. I want our city to focus on bringing sand to our beaches and make it easier for small businesses to thrive. Our city has a lot of work to do. I want my city council members to stop playing politics and get to work. Let's keep this resolution off. Let's focus on what matters for our city and get things done, please. Like, stop focusing on things that don't, that you can't actually work on. Like, this stuff that you can actually do is making our city safe and is getting sand on our beaches. Let's focus on that and stop playing politics.
Suzanne Mooneyham?
Hello, City Council. How are you? I have a article that was, I had read, and they're saying there are four stages of communism. One is demoralization, which takes 10 to 20 years, destabilization, which takes two to four years, crisis, which takes six weeks, and normalization. And our country is basically on number four. Part of this playbook includes paying for homeless housing, including illegal aliens and not veterans or our U.S. citizens, giving them free housing, medical, dental care, and food, gun confiscation under the disguise of safety, sustainability development, climate change, Green New Deal to obtain more taxes, include CO2 emissions. Oh, how about photosynthesis? Oh, we breathe in carbon dioxide and we breathe out, plants breathe in carbon dioxide, plants breathe out oxygen and we breathe in oxygen. Oh, social justice, the playing field is for everyone, using the word democracy instead of constitutional republic, calling healthcare productive rights, actually meaning women's rights to abortion, or emphasis even. God made man and women, not other genders. So, the vote language is entirely different, the way they are actually meaning. So, do we want a constitutional republic? Seal our borders, stop the migration invasion, carry out last deportation, deportation operation in America history, end inflation and make America affordable again, make America the dominant energy producer of the world by far, stop outsourcing and turn the United States into manufacturing superpower, and et cetera, et cetera. Basically, we're voting for either, we need to look at the candidates and look at election integrity, whether we're going to vote for nationalism or we're going to vote for communism. Thank you.
Okay, that's it for oral communications?
Mr. Mayor, can I make just a brief comment?
A brief, yes.
Very brief. I'm confused. This issue was pulled, agenda item was pulled. Nobody has any idea what I feel about this resolution. I've made no comments about this resolution anywhere, whether I was for it or against it. Just Louise, just when I thought you and I were having a breakout moment. So, anyway, that's just for clarification.
Motion waiving reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances. Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Minmire, seconded by Councilmember Noblock. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie's 5-0. Consideration of agendizing items requiring immediate action. Close session report, City Attorney.
Thank you. The council met in closed session on item A1. There's direction given and no reportable action. And they met in closed session on item B1. There was direction given, no reportable action. Thank you.
Okay, staff communications. Mayor and council, I do have a quick communication concerning the upcoming election. Just wanted to provide an update regarding the upcoming election, just notifying the residents that San Clemente has transitioned to district election. So, districts three and four will be voting for city council candidates. Also on the ballot for the entire city is a major, ballot major BB. So, everyone will have the opportunity to vote on our ballot major this year. Councilmembers in districts three and four are up for election. So, if you live in those two districts, you'll be able to vote for candidates. So, again, be sure to review your entire ballot as you're voting. And then, just a couple of quick dates. You should have received your voter information guides over the weekend. Those were mailed out September 26th. If you haven't received them yet, take a look in your mail. Ballots will be mailed beginning October 7th, so this coming week. The city has ballot drop boxes at Jim Johnson Memorial Park, San Clemente Municipal Golf Course, and here at San Clemente City Hall. Those drop boxes will be open October 7th through Election Day. The ballots will be picked up daily, with the exception of Sundays. Sundays may have pickups as we get closer to the election. The vote center at the community center opens on October 26th and will be open through November 5th, Election Day, and beginning November 2nd, additional voting centers will open to the public. So, check our social media pages for that. And then, finally, November 5th, Election Day, the polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Anyone having any questions can give me a call. Okay, so we have no public hearings. We have no unfinished business. Item 10A, consideration of a resolution affirming voting integrity for elections, has been pulled from the agenda. So, the next item is item 10B, contract amendment, solid waste handling services for two months, setting a proposition 218 hearing for November 19, 2024, to set rates and finding the contract categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Dave Rebenstorf, Public Works Director. The council has all been briefed in detail on this item, and there's a detailed staff report. As the city clerk had mentioned this evening, the recommendation is to approve Amendment Four to extend CRNR's contract through, existing contract through December 31 of 2024 and set a Prop 218 hearing for November 19 to review the cost of service agreement or study a new agreement and hear any protests and set rates at that time. So, with that, I'll entertain any questions that the council might have.
I'll move we adopt staff recommendation and adopt Resolution 24-152.
I'll second.
Are we going to vote electronically or do you want?
Do you want to hit the motion? Then I'll second. All right.
Thank you for your report.
And thank you for the lengthy written report.
That carries 5-0. Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. I don't have any public comments. Staff is pulling item 11H. Just to note that the contract has been updated with clarifying language to be consistent with state law. Copies of the revised contract are at your seat at the dais, as well as at the table in the back of the council chambers and online, with just one red line changed to that. Does council have any items to pull from consent?
Is there anyone that wants to pull an item? All right. Do you want to move, someone want to move the down?
I'll move the consent calendar with the modifications made to item 11H, yes.
I'll second.
Carrie's 5-0 to move the consent calendar with the modification to item 11H. Let me just get back to the final part of our agenda here. Oral communications, part two. I do not have any speaker cards. Future agenda items? We do have a staff report on this. Would you like to call Public Works Director Rebenstorf to the front? This is consideration of establishing a city council subcommittee to oversee selection of multi-year tree trimming contractor.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Dave Rebenstorf, Public Works Director. The staff has received, sent out an RFP, and we've received four proposals for tree trimming and some of the challenges we went through last time around with hiring a contractor. We thought it might be a good idea potentially if there was interest in the council, if they wanted to sit in on the process. And so, I leave it up to council's discretion on what you'd like to do.
And we do have one speaker card on this.
Unless there's a question right now, we'll have the speaker, and then, Dave, you're going to be here.
Yes.
Mike Pallett?
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Mike Pallett. I'm actually the Vice President of West Coast Arborists. I'm here to comment on the staff report regarding the proposed subcommittee that faces you this evening. We are one of the vendors that submitted a competitively priced response, this was back in May, for this request. West Coast Arborist is also the vendor that most recently held the tree maintenance contract for the city of San Clemente. And I feel it's necessary to clear up a statement that was in the body of that staff report. There's a statement that reads that "Most recently, the successful bidder requested an amendment to the contract to increase the amount of funds available in order to complete the tree trimming. However, concerns were raised about whether an increase in the contract would still result in the current provider being the lowest bidder." I just wanted to clarify that West Coast Arborists performed all work assigned by city staff and in conformance with the previous contract at the approved bid rates per the contract. On the previous contract, West Coast Arborists' rates were the lowest priced, well below the other prospective bidder's prices. With our contract rates in place, we would have still been the lowest bidder on the contract, regardless of amendments to the budget. We honored our rates through the term of the agreement. The tree budget amendment request that did come to City Council for approval was made by city staff because during that timeframe, there was some storms that took place. There was heavy rains and storms that particular year. The unexpected work encumbered more funds than the staff had allotted in the budget. Those storms are what caused the depleted budget. To keep up with the city's trim schedule, city staff took forward the item for the contract amendment to replenish the funds to keep up with the city's tree maintenance needs. We, at West Coast Arborists, we take pride in the work and our reputation as a tree care provider, serving with integrity. This is why I wanted to bring this to your attention. We gratefully, we are grateful to have had the opportunity to provide care to the city of San Clemente's trees. We're also grateful to have been given a chance to be a part of this wonderful community, and we appreciate your consideration as you make a choice on your future tree care provider. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions for our staff or anyone want to make a motion? Or I, I can speak to it if anyone else wants to.
I'll just say something. I'm not really seeing the need to establish a council subcommittee on this. It seems like this is a very routine staff thing to do, and I think, I'm afraid we're getting too much into the weeds here. Where our job up here is to direct policy, not necessarily to manage. That's why we have our city manager here to do those jobs. So, I'm just, I'm not really seeing why we're, why this is a necessary thing.
I actually agree with you. That's probably what I would have said. Any other comments?
I'll make a motion that we take no action on this matter and allow staff to review the proposals and present a recommendation to our city council.
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion on that? Well, then, did you make the motion on?
I did.
All right.
Carrie's 5-0 to take no action.
All right.
Council Subcommittee Updates.
Oh, I have something for, from the CASA, the, not, not our, the CASA down, Casa Romantica, but the Coastal Animal Shelter. This is Bootsy, neat Bootsy. One thing I would like to start doing is, because I'm on the Subcommittee for the CASA and on the fourth day, I start introducing pet adoptions that are Pets of the Month or Pets of the Week. This is Bootsy. It's a charming seven-year-old gray and white short-haired cat, still looking for his forever home. He's a quiet and respectful companion, making him the perfect addition for a calm and loving household. He absolutely adores gentle pets and treats, and he gets along well with other cats. If you're looking for a sweet, low-key kitty to share your space and your heart with, come meet him at the animal shelter. So.
Well done. I nominate, I nominate Tom Streeter.
Yeah, Tom, you want, you want a cat?
All right. I have a quick report. I mentioned a little bit earlier about what I've been doing these past few weeks. And could we pull up the photos of, it's, I say it's a committee, but it's really my efforts to reach out to the community about sand in San Clemente. And one of the things we were able to do is capture, on the left here, the state of our beaches prior to our efforts with Army Corps of Engineers. As the city council, we, you know, as you know, we dedicate a lot of time, energy, money, our resources to city to restore the beaches. This is the result on the right, when we had the funds and the resources to invest in a sand for our beach community. And the difference is, you know, if we want to remain a beach community and have beaches for children, our grandchildren, we've got to keep making that investment. And I think I've tried to make the case, anywhere I can and whoever will listen, that it's important. And if you haven't heard it, please go to our website and take a look at the facts that we've presented here as a city. Next, next photo. The second project that we have going is in North Beach. Again, the photo on the left is one, actually, I took of the rocks before we started the sand replenishment project there, where we decided as a city to spend city resources to put sand on that beach. And again, the photo on the right shows where it is, I think it was last week, and the beautiful beach that we were able to restore and continue to work on. So, I mean, we are, as a city council, doing all we can to restore our beaches. I'm working on this probably 40 hours a week. So, I mean, it's, it's something I believe in. It's something for our future, and I believe that in the end, we're going to have some of the best beaches in California. The final slide is the area. Now, here is just the opposite photo. The photo on the right is the way the beach used to be down in Cypress Shores. They had acres of beaches down there that are lost. And you can see on the left where the current status is. A couple of months ago, that photo was taken. And that's the area where the OCTA has committed to work with us, and we're working tirelessly with OCTA. And probably on a weekly basis, we have meetings to figure out how we get them as an organization to protect the integrity of the railroad tracks and put sand there to protect those railroad tracks. And that's, that's, that would be, all be funded by the OCTA, and it's a significant amount of money. We're negotiating with them right now, but it's, it's a difficult negotiation. But we will continue to work on that. Andy will probably report out on it in the next few weeks, because it is important and critical that we put the sand there to protect the infrastructure and the homes and the bluffs in that area and throughout San Clemente. And I've talked in the past about a fourth project that we're just getting started on. It's, it will eventually be a multimillion-dollar project, but it's with Sand Act, and we're at the beginning stages of that. And it will put sand throughout the entirety of our San Clemente beaches. But it is a long-term project, but we need the resources for that. And that's why we have a measure out there that allows the citizens of our city to decide whether they want to become a...
You're getting a head nod.
I'm getting a head nod. All right. Oh, I get it. All right. Anyhow, anyhow, go to their website for more information about what the city is doing. Thank you. Next item.
City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I do have a brief report today. My firm, Burke Williams &amp; Sorenson, was a proud sponsor for the second year in a row of the Pet Project Foundation Gala to support CASA, and I was proud to be in attendance to serve both the city of San Clemente and the city of Dana Point that night. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
City Manager?
Nothing.
Adjournment?
Not a privilege? Yes. Someone want to make the, oh, here, yes. Hold on one second. We're going to adjourn tonight in memory of Denise Ware. Denise is an active member, was an active member of the Retired Senior Volunteer Program, one of our best programs here, serving San Clemente community and working with the Orange County Sheriff's Department for the past eight years. She was a dedicated volunteer who, despite her health battles over the last four years, continued to work duty hours, special events, and also coordinated the uniform for the RSVP members. She organized a monthly social dinner for both past and present volunteering, volunteers, ensuring that they all stayed connected. Denise was the type of person that made everyone smile. And up until a month ago, she would put on her uniform and show up with the smiles all her own. We thank Denise and her family for the years of volunteer service. That organization and her are what make this city so great, and so we thank her for her service to this community, and we're going to adjourn the meeting in honor of her tonight. So. Sure. All right. The next regular city council meeting is scheduled to take place on October 15, 2024. Closed session will begin at 5:00, and the regular business meeting will begin at 6:00 p.m. The meeting will take place at the council chambers located at 901-910 Caia Negocio, Second Floor, San Clemente.
I'll second the motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.